That's mashed potatoes, you know.
But talk to me.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. The time is nine oh one. My name is George Moore, B County Judge. I'm gonna call the special called meeting of B County Commissioners Court to order. Today is Tuesday, November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. We're physically located, B County Courthouse, Commissioners' courtroom, number one ten, one oh five West Corpus Christi Street, Beale, Texas, seven eight one oh two. That was the call to order. Moving on to agenda item number two, prayer. Would everybody please stand and join Commissioner Dwyer in a brief prayer?
Commissioner? Father Lord, we want to thank you for everything that you've done for us. Thank you for life. Thank you for putting us on this earth. Guide us, direct us. Help this court to make the best decisions for the people and for the, uh, for the, for, for the county. And help this nation, bring it forward, bring it forward. We ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all. And our second pledge. On my second pledge, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state, under God, one and individual. And Judge, if you will, by the next meeting, those are both to be replaced, and gave us an update or... Excellent. That's great to hear. Thank you, Mr. Ferguson, for doing that. And I'm pleased to report that I got through the pledge without, uh, but I saw the mental stumbling block. I'm still seeing an error in my head and it's causing me to lose, uh, confidence. Y'all ever have some, something that you repeat literally all the time? That's probably what it is. It threw my mind off a little bit. Excellent.
Improved you a little.
Y'all can, can have room for improvement. Uh, agenda item number four, recognizableers. I know that we have a few visitors in the, uh, audience today. Um, this isn't public comment. We're gonna get to that in two more agenda items. But if there's anybody that doesn't wanna speak but would like, uh, to identify themselves for Commissioners' Court on the record, uh, this is your opportunity to do so. And if not, there's no pressure. Uh, uh, but if you do it this time, you can stand up and say, hi, my name's so-and-so, and, and I'm here. And I'll say welcome, and maybe we'll laugh a little bit.
My name's Sterling Smith, and I'm here.
Hey, Mr. Smith, thank you for being here today. Anybody else? Well, thank you all for, uh, this morning. Moving on to agenda item number five, Commissioners' Court, opening remarks. I think we're, Commissioner Haggerty's on it.
Uh, not very much this once, uh, since the last meeting. I did attend the, uh, Marine, Marine Ball. Um, was very, uh, very good. Um, I will admit, our, our, our illustrious starbauer gave the speech. Um, and for most of us in there, uh, was a really nice speech because she, uh, she got a little, uh, little touched by that speech. Uh, you could see it in her voice and everything. Also attended a, uh, little small get-together for, uh, Road and Bridge. Um, we got to see that. And of course, we are losing one individual this year. Uh, he has retired. One of the fellows has been there for thirty-something years, almost like the rest of us. A comment was made by myself that I expect him to find someone who knows half as much as he does. Because if he knows as much as he does, then he's gonna retire shortly thereafter anyway. So, we need to keep him around a while. Uh, noticed the, uh, Ray is working the, uh, the grass in, in the south end. He's got the mowers out. So, other than that, just, uh, up and down the road, um, have a, uh, small thing. I'll talk to Ray with after the meeting about a, a small hole in the road. Uh, but other than that, everything's going good. I've been on the phone, talking to people. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner?
Uh, been pretty busy with the contractors this week. An update on the, uh, we're almost at a standstill at the, uh, ambulance building. Until we move further with, uh, maybe ARP funds or something. But they did start yesterday at the tax office to, um, fix the two rooms. There were water damage. So, the contractors there yesterday, they began yesterday. They're there again this morning. Uh, so that's moving forward. Uh, with, uh, Road and Bridge, they fixed, uh, they're fixing Jeff Smith's road, which is really nice. I mean, they opened it. It almost looks quite the size now, actually. But that, they cut the brush along the sides and they're fixing that side like they did the, uh, Marine Ball and also the, uh, the Thanksgiving luncheon that they had at Road and Bridge. Commissioner?
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, several things. Uh, I was in training yesterday in Chilton with some Parks and Wildlife folks. It's required training. I'm a retired Parks and Wildlife, uh, officer. I have to have this training yearly. Uh, also, uh, attended the, uh, Veterans', uh, Day, uh, celebration here at, uh, the courthouse, along with county judge. I, I know a lot of folks here today are from Oak Grove, uh, about the, uh, speed limit and one thing or another. I reviewed Oak Grove Friday, drove through the, uh, site, looked at it. Before we even get to that item, these folks do a fantastic job out there getting ready. It's stuff for the kids. It's beautiful. Winter, I go out there every year. So, my hat's off to you guys for all the work you do and all, all the things you do for the kids. Uh, the solar and wind farms that are going in north of Mineral are coming along. If you hit some of the back roads around Mineral, and you look out on the, uh, where the solar farm is going, they're in the process of putting the pedestals in that the solar panels will fit on. There's not a few, there's not a hundred, there's not a thousand, there's tens of thousands of those pedestals going in. It, it kinda looks like a cemetery because there's nothing there but this line and line and line of pedestals. I don't know how many acres, seven, eight hundred acres of solar farm was going in. Interspersed among the solar farms are wind turbines. They're also going in. Now, one thing that we were able to, to work with Orsted on, it's a good neighbor, they agreed and we're gonna hold them to it, that the red lights on the wind turbines would only come on when there were aircraft in the area. We've gotten a lot of complaints in different areas of the county and areas in other counties that those red lights blink all night. And the whole farm blinks at one time. And it's irritating if you're sitting on your front porch looking out and you're seeing these red lights all the time. I got a call the other night, the red lights are on. Well, turns out they were testing the lights to see if they worked. Because some of the towers are up, they're five hundred foot tall. I had a person say complaining about the way they looked. I said, well, there's not much we can do except they will be assessed for taxes January first. And the county will start receiving tax revenue the next year. So, I try to always look for the good in everything, and that's the good part of it. The county gave them no tax amendments for the solar or the wind farms north of B County. So, with that, I will pass to my colleague on the right, sir.
Thank you. Um, I went to the, uh, Marine Ball, which I was, uh, first time I've ever done that. That was pretty cool, very interesting, had a good time. Um, we thank Ray. We got, uh, Kinkler, uh, yeah, Kinkler Lane, got all the potholes fixed on that, which was quite a few of them. We did a cemetery cleanup at San Pedro off of Kinkler. And, uh, wanna thank a few people, the sisters, Mari Broadhead and Madeline Neff, elders John Ware, David Leishman, Mary Alice Leeches Alizar, Abel Garcia, I mean Adele Garcia, sorry, Ashley Gonzalez, Sylvia Garcia Smith came out and took a bunch of pictures. Uh, Chris Malinato, Gilbert Morales, Gilbert Morales Junior, Robbie, and, uh, Smokey Neal came out with Blake Fullwater, uh, Antonio Barber Medina. Uh, big thanks to Blake Fullwater. They came out, brought their barbecue pit and grilled, uh, uh, sausage wraps and cheeseburgers for everyone that was out there working and cleaning up, which was pretty cool. So, they, they wanted to, they called me the other day and said they wanted to be a part of what I was doing in the community and get out as well and, and help do stuff like that. So, big thanks to those guys. Um, other than that, just normal business.
Thank you, Commissioners, um, for all of your comments. Thank you, Commissioners, for this. I just noticed this, that, uh, that article we've been working on, right? So, hopefully the other Commissioners will, uh, get a chance to read it, because it really is good. Um, I echo all the, uh, uh, comments of, of our Commissioners, uh, Commissioner Dwyer, and I did come out for the, um, Veterans' Day memorial at, uh, DeBil, uh, what is it? The Garden Club's, uh, uh, memorial? The Garden Club Memorial here on the, what, Blue Star Memorial? Um, and that was a lot of fun. I really appreciate everything the Garden Club does, uh, not only for our community in general, but for the county specifically. Um, I, another thing, and I'm, I'm so sorry to, uh, to everybody here, um, as well to Andy, uh, who I'm, I'm about to put on the spot. Um, as well as to everybody, uh, all the individuals whose names I didn't, uh, uh, collect, um, nor did I participate. So, this isn't me trying to gain any, uh, uh, credit for the good work. But this weekend, or last week, uh, while Andy was on vacation, she, uh, a group of dedicated county employees and, uh, community members came out and washed the jet. So, I don't know if you've noticed the jet, but it's a, a little shinier, a little, uh, less moldy. Um, and, um, and Candy, can you, can you give us a rundown of, of everybody that was there? Mickey Ochoa was there, Candy Estrada, Nikel Gonzalez, Jacob Pruitt, thank you. He's been, uh, he's been one of the, uh, uh, one of the guys leading the charge trying to, to get the jet cleaned up. There were some groups? The Barnhart Group. The Barnhart Group came out? Uh-huh, okay. The fire department came out, too?
Yeah, I know the fire department was there, too, yes.
So, if you did come out, thank you so much. Um, and if any of y'all, any, anybody, uh, if you're ever interested in, uh, helping out or doing anything like that, we actually have. All of this is leading up to, uh, the Christmas celebration in B County. Uh, we've got a committee, uh, Mrs. Gonzalez, our county clerk, is the... Is she the chair? She is now. She's the chair of the committee, uh, and, uh, her office is right across the hall. If, if anybody, yeah, she's not here, so she's the chair. No, good. Uh, no, uh, the idea is, you know, when, when COVID happened, we, we stopped, uh, the tree lighting service for a year. And, uh, and the community really reacted strongly to that. So, we're trying to come back. Uh, Mrs. Gonzalez, like I said, is kinda, uh, organizing and leading the charge in that respect. This Thursday is our tree lighting ceremony. It starts at five thirty, goes till eight. Uh, we're gonna have choirs from our local schools. We're gonna have, uh, food trucks, vendors. Uh, local, uh, local entities are also, some local entities are also setting up booths. They'll be handing out, uh, little tchotchkes. Um, and, uh, maybe have small activities for children. Is the, is the parade on?
Not that day.
Not that day? Okay. Santa's coming? All right, bring your kids. Santa will be here, apparently. I, I don't know how we swung that, but, uh, kudos. Mickey Ochoa, the direct line to the North Pole. Mickey Trevino, my apologies. Thank you. The peanut gallery, for all your corrections over the years. Thank you, though. I really appreciate that. No, you're done. Of course. Commissioner, Lenny?
Uh, one thing I forgot, um, I'd gone by the McClanahan House and did a Christmas tree. And I think you guys need to go by there and check it out. That's, it's pretty cool. They've got a lot of Christmas trees decorated all different ways. And, uh, they are also accepting donations, and that money goes back towards repairs and whatnot to that McClanahan House. So, it's a good deal to go to. Check it out.
Thanks, Commissioner. Yeah, and the McClanahan House is managed and operated and maintained by the B County Historical Society. Correct, yes. Um, so another great group of, uh, individuals who are committed to maintaining and, and, uh, restoring and keeping the history of B County alive. So, thank you to everybody that's getting in the Christmas spirit, because we are in it. There's nothing further? Anybody else want to go there? Okay, that's it for us. Move on to agenda item number six, public comment. Is there, are there any members of the public who are present today that would like to address Commissioners' Court? Now is your chance, if you'd like to do that. If you are interested, uh, just let me know. You'll come up, stand at the di- at the dais. Dais. You'll stand at the lectern and, uh, uh, and speak to us. Anybody? Oh, wonderful. Thanks, ma'am. And you need to tell us your name. You can do it once you get up there, just so we have it on the record.
My name is Megan Handy. I'm a resident of Oak Grove Road. We started a petition for Oak Grove Road, and I'd like to read to our petition. We, the residents of Oak Grove Road in the county of B, petition the B County Commissioners' Court to submit the following request to install speed bump, speed limit signs and children's play signs. We are also requesting to set the speed limit on Oak Grove Road to ten miles per hour. These requests come with the following explanation. We all have young children and have had major problems with vehicles speeding down our dead-end streets during the normal times of year. Most of you know, our small community on Oak Grove Road also provides the county with a Christmas lighted experience. We, as a community, enjoy providing this experience at no cost to the public or the county, but we need help from B County to ensure the safety on our streets. With traffic during the Christmas season, we easily see a hundred to two hundred cars on weeknights and upwards of five hundred cars a night on weekends. Oak Grove Road does not have posted speed limit signs to inform the community on what the average speed should be and no speed bumps to ensure that they keep a reasonable speed limit. We, as a community, are scared and concerned for the safety of our children to be out riding bicycles, playing in the front yard, or crossing the street to visit with neighbors and friends. Since the two thousand and twenty-one Christmas season is already here, we are requesting that the county place temporary speed bumps or rumble strips to help ensure the safety of our children, residents, and public on Oak Grove Road. This request is well overdue, and we have gone through the proper channels to contact our county commissioner for permanent speed bumps to be installed on Oak Grove Road. Those attempts have been less than adequate. Our commissioners come up with no solution to help our residents. This has left us with no choice but to petition Commissioners' Court and have our president at the November thirtieth safety meeting. We hope that you, as a court, will provide our residents with an appropriate resolution to our good opportunity for us to speak in person and have our voice heard, the residents of...
Thank you, Ms. Andy.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak this morning, Commissioners' Court? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Laura Warnock, Elections Administrator. I wanted to thank the court again for our building and invite y'all to come by and see it. It's now decorated for Christmas. And you can see our remodel and our Christmas decorations. It's been done very well this year. So, please come by and invite the public to come by and see our newly remodeled building. And let you know that we are back in our building, contrary to what the community short said. We are located in the building again. So, thank you, Commissioners.
Excellent. Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else that would like to address Commissioners' Court? By show of hand, are there other individuals from the Oak Grove, uh, uh, road that are here today, uh, in support of Ms. Andy's, uh, comments? Okay, thank y'all so much. Anybody else want to speak?
Will we be able to speak once the agenda item comes up, or is it kind of...
There is an item? Give them a chance. Yeah, we can, uh, we can address it at, at the time, um, that it comes up. I'm okay with that. Uh, unless anybody, does anybody on Commissioners' Court...
I do have one, one question. Ms. Andy, do you have a copy of your petition you could give the clerk so it can be put in the official record?
Yes.
If you'll present her with that, it'll be in the official record, ma'am.
And, and if you don't have, if that's your only copy, we can run a copy real quick for you. That's no problem. Yeah, why don't we do that? That way we can, it'll all be fresh on our minds, Mr. Smith. There's a territory to cover before we get back to that. I thought Sammy was taking the fell up.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's really good turkey.
Turkey, yeah, for backup. Okay, moving on. Agenda item number seven. Yeah, that's no problem. Unless there's any objection. Let me get through this from Ferguson.
I'm sorry.
Let's do the... Yeah.
I'm sorry.
You don't have to apologize. This is good. Good idea. Agenda item number seven. The following items are of administrative nature. Commissioners' Court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a Commissioner or, uh, County.
Approve of the comment? I'm watching the approval of the comment.
I have a motion. I have a motion and a second. Further discussion, Commissioner Dwyer?
Uh, looking at the comp time balances, we've got two. One of them has a hundred seventy-seven point five, another has a hundred twenty-one point sixteen. And we might, the rest of them in their twenties and thirties are left. We might wanna take a look at those, yes.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I think we're, we're actually, we're, uh, there are some discussions in connection with some of those comp time issues that we're looking at. So, hopefully in a, a future agenda, uh, it'll come up, so we can discuss it in earnest, probably until after the first of the year.
Yeah, I wanna, uh, recognize, uh, precinct two JP, uh, revenue for that, uh, Justice Peace Office this last, uh, reporting period was over twelve thousand dollars.
Yeah, Joe Walter's been doing a really good job. Noticed the last couple of months, uh, proceeds have really come up.
That, that's what I had, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or commentary?
I do have my financials in your packet if you wanted to go over them.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you go to page five, you'll see our revenues. Um, this October, financial does not have, um, our Avalorum distribution. Um, the auditor's office has, when we turned this in, we did not have the, uh, tax office reports, uh, that I used for my distribution. That's why you see, um, a zero in that section. Uh, but we have since received it, and I'm working through some kinks on it. Um, so this is a little off just because of that distribution. The money was received, it's just distributing to, uh, our debt service and our road bridge. Uh, but we're on, I mean, we're on mark. Our expenditures are, are good. We're still coming out, uh, still coming through fiscal year twenty-one. Uh, we're almost done. Working through some additional PIs, but our last run, uh, should be done this week.
Okay.
Trying to...
Great. So then the last, uh, last approvals for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-one, December?
Mm-hmm, yes, yes. And, and you do see, uh, the utilities that, because we already finished paying the utilities, so that's the line-out and transfer that you see in your packet as well. Uh, for the freeze that we went over.
I had, I did have one suggestion on a, on a account was setting up ARP funding summaries. Uh, I know you've got the total set up, but the information we're getting from, uh, our consultant, they take care of that for us.
Uh...
In other words, we've got a total of three million, and I know we're allocating so much for each one. If that could start showing up in our packet, it might be good, just to talk.
Um, well, I, I mean, as far as what they give us, I mean, you do have a standing agenda item on...
It would give us a running total of where we are with the money.
Well, unless it's extended, I mean, that's not gonna hit my financial. I mean, right now, this is just...
Right, but when we, when we, I, I know you've already got it set up as a line-out or a...
You have a fund?
And once we start expanding, it'll start coming off the...
You'll see it, because we have a, a fund set up, uh, Fund Seventy-Eight. And you see, um, the balance in here, and you'll see it decrease. Any questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, too.
You could have come through the...
I do. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Now, at the, uh, the suggestion of Commissioner Dwyer, it's a good suggestion. I'm going to rearrange the agenda. I'm gonna move agenda item ten, uh, uh, up to the top of the remaining agenda items. So, moving on, discuss and consider action on the following items. We're skipping down to agenda item number ten. Approved request for the placement of Texas Department of Transportation, TechDoc, approved speed bumps on Oak Grove Road at the residential owner's expense. We had heard during public comment, uh, from Ms. Andy and, uh, Mrs. Ma- Mrs. Andy? My apologies. Ms. Andy. From Ms. Andy, and she had read out, uh, a petition, uh, that we all now have a copy of. And it's been signed by, let's see, thirteen, uh, residents. I presume they're all residents. I didn't look at the addresses, but I presume they're all on Oak Grove Road.
They all have their addresses listed in the board right all of the other roles.
Okay. So, um, how do we wanna proceed, uh, with this, Commissioner? This is your district.
Was it also it's here?
Oh, no, it was mine. Okay. But, yeah, after, after that, I don't know that I should be speaking at all, uh, anymore. I'm gonna figure out whose district it is, uh, problem solved. Ms. Andy, is there anything further you'd like to address the court? At this point? Mr. Smith, you wanna?
Uh, with not to speed bumps.
Right. So, I, yeah, I understand that.
I can say a few things. Um, I spoke to...
For the record, I need to, need you to...
I'm Jessica Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I thought it was the other way around.
Um, I had, uh, called Sammy, uh, about a year ago and talked to him over the phone about things that we were needing done. Uh, more than just because we were having issues with our whole street, the pavement was coming up because of all the traffic. Um, and it just didn't pan out to be anything. Um, he hurried to get off the phone, didn't really wanna have the conversation again, and told me I needed to call Tech Doc to fix the problem. And so, that is mainly why we're here today, because we, as a whole group on our community, on our street, have decided that we need to go through a bigger channel to get this problem fixed. Um, we're just really concerned now there's more children on our street than there are adults at this point. And it's disheartening to see people flying down the street to go look at lights at night. But it's also disheartening to see it happening with county trucks that come down our streets that drop off all of the... At the end of our road, we have, uh, county drop-off pits. And there's county vehicles that haul us. It's not just regular people, our trash trucks haul us, the FedEx trucks, the UPS trucks. Um, it's, it needs to be addressed across the board, not just during the Christmas time. Um, the Christmas time is what worries us most, because our children are outside at night, seeing the people go by. Our, our children last night gave out candy cubes to people driving by. Um, it's something that we enjoy so much as our little community, but we've got to have the help from, from the county to, to fix the main problem of whether or not we should let our kids even be outside in the front yard. It's not just B County as a whole. We have people from tri-county areas come in to see our lights. It's not just our community here. It's surrounding communities. The people who aren't from here are familiar with our community. They don't know, like, okay, hey, I need to drive slowly down this road. I mean, they fly down our street to look at lights.
And a lot of people don't even like that. They don't even know what to do.
No, they don't, because they're not, they're not...
Well, in our little street, our Christmas lights have gotten so elaborate over the years that, I mean, we've been all the way to, on the Houston news, Corpus news, the Annulee, and, uh, uh, you know, it's, uh, people come from all over. We've had school buses, uh,
Bring kids.
From surrounding counties come just to see, you know, just to see the light and enjoy the, the experience.
Can I, can y'all educate me a little bit on, uh, and I apologize, I'm not better prepared to have this discussion with y'all this morning. Uh, what efforts have y'all undertaken, or what information, uh, do you have as far as, uh, the location, appropriateness of the type of, uh, speed bump or, or other signage? Have y'all spoken with Road and Bridge? Just kind of in general, kind of tell me, okay, I understand you, you talked to, uh, your commissioner about a year ago. Um, what, what's happened in the interim? Can you...
Well, we have talked to, uh, Jesse Argando, um, previously about having permanent speed bumps put in. And all that we've been told was that the, they don't want the liability of the speed bump. Well, all of us don't understand what liability there would be, but, uh, so in doing that, we just started researching on the internet, Amazon. You know, you can get, uh, plastic or rubber speed bumps, temporary speed bumps. And that's what we're, we don't understand what the, the liability-wise, what it would be. I mean, we're trying to prevent an accident, not make an accident. And, uh, when you have, uh, a minivan that's just rocking side to side because the kids are so excited to see all the light, and then you got a car that comes in there flying around them, you know, it's, it's pretty hazardous and, and disheartening for us, us to see. You know, it's like, look, that's not the reason why these are put up, you know? We want the minivans that's over here rocking. You know, and I understand, you know, you can't control who's coming and who's going, but we can certainly try to slow them down, you know? Uh, and, and yours... And in your past, the sheriff's department has come out there and set their, set at the entrance just with their flashing lights on. And that's helped tremendously, you know, while they're there. And, but that's what, what we're trying to do is just make it safe and enjoyable for everybody to come through and see our light.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't ask you to identify yourself.
I'm sorry, Will Handy.
Will Handy. Thanks, Mr. Handy. Yep, please.
Like I said, I went by and looked at Oak Grove Road and there's a dead end signs that you should go in. And then y'all have children signs down there with the, the overhand.
Yeah, and that sign came from Cleveland.
Okay, well, anyway, I told you.
So, that's.
Let me, let me take you back to my former career at State Park. And we looked at speed bumps when I was in Austin headquarters. I was over half the state of Texas. And we looked at speed bumps and we were going to put them somewhere in State Park. Our legal business did not know the blame. The liability you get into with speed bumps or even the rumble strips, people lose control, they're not watching what they're doing. They run over somebody, they cause an accident. We couldn't put them in our parks. You won't find them in the state parks. You will find them in a few high-end cities in Texas. But San Francisco County tried speed bumps a couple of years ago. They had to take them back up. Same reason, liability involved. If you lose control of your vehicle, county's one to get sued. You guys don't. It's back on the county. We have a deep pocket. But not to dwell on the negative, there are some things that, that, that I looked at that maybe we can do. When you're looking at your speed limit, there is no speed limit, which means fifty miles an hour at least. But there's a law against conditions that they can be written up for exceeding existing conditions. We are limited by law as to how low we can take a speed limit. Mr. Gonzalez, correct me if I'm wrong.
Twenty miles an hour.
Thirty, isn't it?
Twenty.
Twenty. We can't go to ten. By law, we can't do it. We can go to twenty. What we may look at, and I might make this as a recommendation, see what y'all think. It's an emergency this time of the year, okay, to go before court and do the speed limits for anything else, take a public hearing, thirty days notice. There's not time. But we might look at an emergency and put up slow signs, put up some cones, put up some barriers just to let people know to slow down. And the experience that I've had in situations like you guys are seeing, a lot of the times, it's people that live there on their way to work in the morning or getting home in the evening before dark. So that's what we experienced in some of our other communities in B County and some of our county roads when they said, we got to have speed limit signs. We put up a speed limit sign, the first people that were given tickets were the people that lived on the road. They're used to driving a certain speed. They don't realize it. As short as that road is, it's probably less than a third of a mile long.
Quarter mile long.
Is it quarter? When you're going twenty miles an hour, it seems fast because of the.
So people are driving faster than that.
I understand, but even twenty seems fast on that road. And, and, and there's no speed limit sign, but right now, I think it could be declared an emergency and we could put up slow signs. All, all up and down. That's something that could be done right away. And correct me if I'm wrong, Judge, on that.
I don't know.
As an emergency, slow signs is something that's, uh, it's not a certain number, but it is slow. Like there's construction going on or there's a situation going on. It's something we could temporarily put up for the whole month of December while we're trying to figure out exactly what to do. If we, we can start the process, Commissioner Fisk can start the process to put up the twenty mile an hour sign. But that takes a public hearing. It's got to be in the newspaper because it's a legal thing. It has to be done that way so it could be enforced.
So.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just to address Mr. Sterling, I apologize if I seem like I was in a hurry. The question you asked me at the time to go in to fix your road was the state TechDoc road. The county's never maintained anything on, it's got a line on it. We maintain them up. And if I'm not mistaken, Ray, Mr. Gonzalez has gone out there that, this year and last year, a year before, and patched the holes going in. Go ahead, Ray.
Yes, uh, Oak, Oak Road had been resealed. Last year it was resealed. He also mentioned that the county would go to the end of the road to go in that pit. We don't have any pits down there. We don't go, we don't get any material from that, from that pit down there. So we don't, we don't use that road. Others, they're going there with the.
The county.
It's not us. We, we don't have a pit down there. There's a pit there. It's not ours.
It's not county.
No, ma'am. And we did reseal that road last year.
All the way to what belongs to the county. Now, I did call the Mr. Constante and I, you know, gave him my concerns about that road and they said they were going to look into it. But, you know, we as a county or road and bridge does not take care of anything on the state, right?
And as far as the speed limit, you would have to call our office if you're requesting a speed limit. We have never had any, any calls on that road as far as speed limits. Now that I know, we can send it up. It's got to go to court like Commissioner DeWitt mentioned. But, uh, and we do have a dead end sign.
Well, if twenty miles an hour is the lowest speed limit that you can go, period, well, a slow sign would probably be better, better off than actual speed limit sign.
Again, it was, even if it's a twenty or whatever it is, you need enforcement. If you don't have enforcement, there's nothing going to do you in the pit. You need enforcement.
If I could add, you're talking about a slow sign. What's slow to me is not slow to you or not slow to them or whatever. So they kind of pick whatever slow is. I agree with the speed limit signs. I've had several installed in Skidmore and up in, in, up in Dville, in the town then. So, and I do know the sheriff's department is very willing to, they've done that for quite a while to sit out. And I, I realize that. Once they're there, oh, it's amazing how people just, they understand the speed limit for some reason.
At first we controlled that road, put them in there last time. It was great while we were there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's kind of like, it's kind of like the school zones. The school zones are great when there's a red, red, green light.
You have to understand that a slow sign cannot be enforced.
No, and we looked, I know that last year or two years ago, we looked at speed bump.
Can't be enforced.
I, I got with the county attorney at that time and we got on the list there. He checked with TAC. And the county would maintain that liability. Nobody does. Like we should do it, as the state parks don't do it. Some of the bigger cities do it, but that's within their inner, inner city. Yes, sir.
I used to be an engineer for TechDoc out of Karnes. I had to go in and be accountable. And there's definitely speed bumps that meet TechDoc requirements. I think there's a TechDoc statute where you can definitely get approved speed bump. I just think it's kind of not the best thing to throw out speed bumps as a measure of speed control just because of liability. That's what speed bumps are for, is to control speed. I, I get it. There will be some liability if we put up a, a speed bump that that is back or too big or something like that. But if we put up a certified TechDoc approved or county approved speed bump, that's what those things are manufactured for, is to control speed. So I think, you know, think about that before you just throw it out for liability. There's, I mean, TechDoc puts up speed bumps. We had speed bumps that are better in first memorial park.
You know, something else to think about is possibly a decoy vehicle from the sheriff's office, an older vehicle. You see them in cities a lot of times. They'll set them up. And when people see the vehicle, they automatically slow down even though maybe there's a mannequin in it or there's nobody.
Put a Santa Claus mannequin in it?
Yeah.
Make it all festive.
Or a mobile radar. Mrs. Jones, that'd be, you know, don't we have a mobile radar that we could just chain to a tree or somebody's car or something?
No, there's.
I can provide you a tree.
You won't need to change it. There's one sitting in Skidmore right now. It's been there for four months, I think. Yeah. Deputy Franco put them out there. So it's been there for four months and it, and it, it's right there at the school, so.
I noticed on the petition, we have signatures representing seven addresses. Are there ten, ten homes out there?
I believe so, but we were unable to get a hold of everybody because we're scheduled holidays, everything else. So we're trying to get as many signatures as we can before this meeting.
Oh, that's, that's, that's fine. I didn't, I didn't know. And I'm not asking if there's opposition, but obviously if there's any public hearing, that would be their opportunity to, it, it would appear that seven out of ten is the majority of, of the homes. I don't know if it's a majority of the folks that reside on that road.
Judge, during the holiday season, maybe just more patrol or mobile radar or slow sign. I mean, we have to look into the signs though.
You know, Commissioner, the suggestion you made along with the slow signs, I think is excellent. The sign that shows the speed and the slow sign, I think is a good combination. What do y'all think about that? Absolutely. And Commissioner Hager, would you unlock yours and let us take it to Oak Grove?
Sure.
Where would you set it up?
Oh, it just, it's kind of trying to.
Kind of like a little.
It'll be one direction.
I understand, but where, where would y'all prove, and obviously you can work with sheriff's office directly on placement.
Yeah, the sheriff's though would know the best location.
Yeah.
One quarter mile dead end road.
Yeah.
Uh, I was thinking, is there anything set up tonight?
They, they said they'd set it up tonight. It'd be there tonight. Where about the slow?
And there's an adjustment you can set, like if you're going over ten, fifteen, twenty miles an hour, it'll start flashing.
I'm not sure on that one.
Uh.
I know.
No, it actually flashes if you're over the speed limit.
Right, if you're over the speed limit.
Over the speed limit, it's going to flash. If you're at the speed limit, that's going to stay red.
And how quickly could you get up those?
No, I would have to probably order those. We have some of this.
Do we have any barricades we could just put up temporarily?
Put barricades.
That's what I mean.
Yes. And so it's made slow signs.
Right, barricades. See, I'm, I'm just talking about barricades with the slow sign for now. If we can get that, maybe bar some from the highway part, the slow sign.
The city have those signs also? The city has the electric sign?
With the speed or?
Or no, highway sign, slows or whatever on there. Maybe they can let you use it.
Yeah, just for the thirty days while we're, exactly, exactly what we're going to do.
So who would be the point of contact for road communities to deal directly with the sheriff's office and, and Mr. Gonzalez with road and bridge?
Oh, you can call, I can be the point of contact as well.
Okay, Mr. Handy, uh, Mr. Gonzalez is right behind you. That's his chief deputy, Ryan Jones. And make sure you get their contact information. And of course, we can continue to consider the permanent solution and, and set that up at a future Commissioner's court meeting. And nothing's off the table, Mr. Smith. We can look at, we can look and consider everything and see what sort of solutions there might be. And I would definitely expect and want that y'all would continue to be an active part of that. This is something that is directly, you know, impacting, impacting you. And so I don't want you to, to get the impression that y'all don't have to do anything else and that this board is going to resolve it all. I'd like y'all to continue to share your ideas, your opinions and your strong feelings and beliefs with respect to the solutions that you need for this road, these be county, our county department and the Commissioner's court. I really appreciate y'all coming this morning. I don't know. Do we need to take action to have road bridge?
We have another question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you all for here. Absolutely appreciate y'all giving us time up here. But as a resident there, I don't really like the, the radar thing. That's, that's going to just put more flashing lights, those things go red and green and if anybody is forcing it, that's just letting you know how fast you're not supposed to be going. I think that'd be more of an obstruction than a beneficial thing. First of all, there are also residents of both roads. They may not do that. That's my personal thought. If we decide what to do, I don't personally like the, or think a radar would be a very good thing.
Just, just, just a thought. I, I think that's when we'll find out that twenty miles an hour seems extremely fast on that road. And we could put it up maybe temporarily and see how it goes and then take it out. I, I, my recommendation is to go ahead and try it. I realize that it's another thing on the road, but it might, all these people from out of county or anything, might help them understand, hey, there's something going on here. We need to be more careful. That's just a thought.
Can we turn it off and on?
And you can physically go out there and turn it on.
Yes.
And, and the one that, the one that we're going to put there does not have the red and blues. It's just in the screen itself. It just flashes if you're over the twenty miles an hour. What if you step it out?
And it probably.
Now it comes on when you're.
As you're coming to it.
As you're coming to it, it turns on. If you're, if you're, if speed limit is start flashing. And if you're within speed limit, it's going to show you the speed limit.
And if it's something that y'all as a group don't, don't want to proceed with, that's, that's fine. It's just a.
I think that any of it, any of it is going to help. The signs, barricade, temporary barricade, slow moving signs, radars, signs, any of it is going to, any of it and all of it will help. Is it going to solve, is any of it going to solve our problem? No, there's, it's not going to solve anything, but everything is help. So in, you know, if there's, if there's anything that we can do to help, well, you know, everything, you end up helping a lot. You know, if, if each little thing helps a little bit, well, you're going to end up helping a whole lot.
Yeah, I'm looking at the, the, the slow sign, not just in one place.
You need to have them two.
Sure.
Exactly.
That'd be great.
You know, because a lot of people, when they get done at the end.
Yeah.
If there's not a line of traffic, I mean, they're flying to get out of there and, I mean, we've tried, we've tried, hey, you know, please slow down. You know, it's, it's, sometimes it helps, sometimes it doesn't.
Please don't run out in front of them.
No, we don't. But when we're standing on the side path, you know, candy cakes.
We can't let happen.
I mean.
I got a bucket full of rocks.
Yeah.
I, I know Mr. Gonzalez keeps up with the roads because he's on his radar all the time. I do call TechDoc and I do let them know about that entrance coming in. It's a part they maintain. So that's done. As far as that goes, I can't make any more calls than that and just kind of push them a little bit.
I, just a thought, I think we've kind of gotten away from the dead end signs and now we're using no, no turnaround.
No outlet.
No outlet. It seems more effective than dead end. And usually the dead end signs are stolen and wind up in dorm rooms anyway, but that one's still there for some reason. Just a thought.
As far as TechDoc, and I'm not defending TechDoc, I've called them for several items. They have a list. They have a pad just like this and you're put on the list. And so they, of course, severity is another one. They look at the severity of it too. So, um, I, I do know that, that everything we've asked, all four commissioners have asked for from the state, from the state. It's on there and it's either taken care of or working on. I have two projects now, four actually, that are on the list. I still can't, but it's not even this department. It's TechDoc, but it's TechDoc from Austin and other areas that cover it. Seems it's all tied up in engineering. That's not an engineering thing, but what I'm just trying to say is a lot of the things we give them, they take care of. And then there are times that they can't.
Can I, can I make a, just a suggestion? I manage a property here on the side of the precinct. It's a town home association. And some compliance signs, and there are plenty more out there, but I don't find off the internet. Close children at play signs are available that you can sign, put up in your yard.
Yeah, we, we all have those. I've always made a terrible to put in our yard.
These are the nice metal ones and they're very.
I have mine.
It's a soft item, so.
I've had mine taken off my pole.
Yeah.
So I, I've put much like three friends in their own house.
If they get, if they get the gray and they get the, Mr. Jones, I think.
I have just one more question. As residents of Oak Grove Road, can we purchase our own speed bumps and put them across the road just during the holiday?
Because the county's still, it's our road. Now, if you want to purchase the whole road. I mean, we'll entertain you, but then you have to maintain the road.
Then you have to maintain it. Now, actually, most of us now, we talk about speed bumps. Rumble strips are another one. And you'll notice that most construction sites use a rumble strip. And a rumble strip is basically just an attention getter. I saw with this. I tried to avoid them, but anyway, they're, they're just a, just an attention getter. So we, we may, we may look at something, but I can understand the part about being the liability part of it.
Go ahead. To voice my knowledge on this, traffic, basically controlled, a big part of it, you know, engineer TechDoc. Almost just one, we don't want to hear the noise in that small area.
That's the other part.
And also those, rumbles are much more effective at highways than, than in local.
And, and we'll confirm, I'll, I'll confirm with the county is so fortunate to have a strong relationship with, I think, called the Texas Association of Counties. One of the things that, that they do is they, they put us in touch with and, and we have representation from one of the top lawyers in the state and, and his entire firm. And so I'll touch base with them today on the, on the question regarding legality and liabilities. And try to get you something a little bit more specific other than, it's just so, so you have something that they can point to and say, okay, this is the reason why. So I'll see what I can do for you. I don't make you promises, but I, I will, I will touch base directly.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. What I was going to say before, is there anything else that y'all want to address at this time? I don't believe that we need, the Commissioner's Court needs to take any action to, to move forward with. Um, uh, I don't believe that we need, the, the Commissioner's Court needs to take any action to, to move forward with what we've, uh, discussed today. Uh, y'all as the, uh, the loose association, uh, group, um, if y'all could, again, uh, uh, Mr. Handy? Thank you, sorry. Uh, Mr. Handy, if, if you and your group wanna get together with, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, I'm, I'm sure he's, uh, more than happy to, to talk with you. How you doing, the Simmons, after this meeting and whenever Mr. Gonzalez may be available on the Simmons group for, uh, the Sheriff's Office. Uh, and I don't know if it's gonna be Chief Deputy Ryan Jones or, or somebody that he wants to delegate that to. If you have any difficulties in getting telephone numbers or getting, uh, in contact, please understand you guys can always contact, uh, me at three six one six two one one five five six, just the main numbers. Speak with Andy, uh, or Dolores or Mike in, in, in my office and, and we can, uh, assist you in getting into the right part of the journey.
Women into the constables, the active constables also.
Yeah, they might, they might, that's, that's three more right there.
Might just go park out there for a little bit and they-
That, that's, that's great. Every time, like I said, I mean, they, we've had, you know, county SL out there, troopers, or they will, they'll come and they'll just sit on the, in the, on the shoulder there, uh, for a little while with their, just their hazards on. And that right there, I mean, you want to slow everybody to a crawl.
Yeah.
You know, put the flash and latch up, you know, so it, uh, I mean, all of that helps, you know, it, it were, everything, all of it helps a little bit.
And, and in closing, um, I think it's important, uh, to say, and I know I'm, I'm echoing the sentiments of everybody up here, uh, at this table. Um, I don't know how many years it's been now, uh, I don't know how long y'all have been doing your, the, the Christmas scene. Uh, but it's, it's a wonderful, wonderful, uh, uh, display. Uh, I know it's a display that comes at incredible time and expense to y'all as the homeowners on the road and that you do it for the benefit, not of yourself individually. Cause I think Mr. Smith alluded to, uh, all the lights, the flashing light and the traffic can become a drag for y'all during the Christmas time too. And, and, and I recognize that, but I can't tell you how wonderful it is for the entire community. And so for y'all's added time, effort and actual monetary expense of putting it together, thank you. It, it really is, really is, I think what you guys, uh, do, uh, and have done for so many years. And it's just kinda like the North Pole, you know, when all of us were kids growing up.
Yeah.
So, so we do, we are looking at, at y'all's requests in light of, of, of that. Um, that, that does, that does change it, uh, for us greatly because of, of what y'all are already doing for the community. So thanks very much. Is there anything further, anybody else? Final concluding thoughts? Thanks so much, I could say y'all, uh, please move forward with the emergency temporary, uh, measures and let's continue to engage. Uh, you can call me anytime, uh, and, and see if we can get some questions answered, get some definitive, uh, movement made, decision. See if there's something that we can do or if it's gonna be an annual temporary, uh, uh, solution that we really need to look at. And at this point in time, I'm sorry, I just don't know what to talk to my head. So, but I do think it's a very important and valid, uh, issue that y'all brought up, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So there's nothing further, we'll move on. Uh, and y'all are welcome to stay the rest of the morning, or y'all are also welcome to, to leave at this time. There's no, there's no negative connotation that's taken from, uh, uh, leaving after your agenda item has been heard. Moving on to agenda item number eight, approved D County appraisal district resolution casting B County's farm road allocated votes for the Board of Directors of the Appraisal District tabled from the November eighth, twenty twenty one special call meeting. Uh, gentlemen, I, I, we, we reviewed this resolution at the last meeting and there were questions that we had that hadn't been answered. Um, I'm not sure that I have all of the, uh, questions answered, uh, that we need, but I think I do. Let me start by, uh, saying if I could direct everybody's attention to the, uh, the list y'all have. Okay, so there's, there's ten names on the list. And going down those names, uh, I'm gonna tell you who the current incumbents are. Uh, the current incumbents are Keen Fuller, uh, he's the secretary, Amy Gaetan, Paul Looney, he's the vice chair, and Jeff Staples, he's the current chairman. Um, the other incumbent is Alexis Bledsoe, she's not on the, uh, nomination list. It's my understanding that, uh, that it was a commitment that she was unable to, uh, continue. Uh, we thank her for her service. Um, so that leaves, uh, oh, and the other one of note is Michelle Mattis is also on the list. Mrs. Mattis, our tax assessor collector, is a non-voting, uh, member of the board already. Um, I've spoken with Mrs. Mattis, she's not interested in becoming a voting member. There are some, uh, uh, control issues that, that pop up with respect to our roles, tax, uh, assessor collector versus, uh, a director of the appraisal district. Uh, so we wanna avoid that, but it is important that Mrs. Mattis understands what's going on and, and has that direct line to the board because of the tight interrelation between these two entities. Uh, so that y'all understand D County Appraisal District is not controlled by D County, it's a misnomer, it's controlled by the state of Texas. Uh, it's controlled by a Board of Directors, but it answers to the state of Texas, all we do is fund it, along with the other taxing jurisdictions in the county. Um, additional information that might, uh, might impact, uh, any discussion, uh, that we have on who we might want to allocate our thirteen hundred and sixty-one votes. Um, Mr. Looney received all four hundred and fifty-three of Pawnee ISD's votes. Um, and Paul San Miguel, uh, received all of CBC's votes. I don't know how many votes CBC had, um, off the top of my head, so I apologize, I realized that this morning and I was putting this information together. If we, uh, divide, if we, uh, equally divide our votes amongst four candidates, uh, are no, are nominees, that would be three hundred and forty votes for three individuals and three hundred and forty-one for one individual. If we divide our votes amongst five, uh, candidates, we have two hundred and seventy-two votes for four people and two hundred and seventy-three votes for one person. We can, we can put all of our votes in on one person, on two, on three. Of this list, the individuals that we have nominated, uh, and this kind of is, this is a list of nominations that, uh, that we had made, um, when one individual had resigned. Um, and then another individual had resigned. Thank you, uh, I'm, no, thank you. Sorry, Sid Hall is not, uh, is, is, is not interested, as I understand it, uh, at this time. He served, he served for a long time and we really appreciate, um, as a community member, all of his years of effort with respect to the appraisal district.
Judge, are the rest of them in the district and serving, or have we double checked that?
We did, we double checked that and everybody is interested, uh, in serving. I know that our, uh, our, uh, prior nominations were Thomas Mengers, Edward Palosic and Amy Gaetan. Um, but, you know, I also know Keen Fuller, Paul Looney, uh, Jeff Staples, uh, current members, uh, have done an excellent job. Um, and really all of these individuals, Louie and Paul San Miguel are two wonderful community advocates as well.
One thing that, that, that I understand, and I know that the, I know it's the school district did this, it might have been the city, they, they divided their votes among all the candidates. That's noble and that's equitable, but it's not wise. Because it takes so many votes to put a candidate in, and when you split them up like that, you're really giving your votes away. These four people that are currently on the board, Keen Fuller, Amy Gaetan, Paul Looney and Jeff Staples, Judge just said they're doing a good job, I haven't heard anything negative about them. I would look at dividing them among those four. Uh, they're already there, they know what they're doing, they've been there for a while. Uh, if, if you have a lady on the board, uh, I, I think it's a good idea. Uh, I know that in my married life, there's a lot of things that my lovely wife has come up with that just hits me in the face like, God, I wish I would have thought of that. So these ladies do a good job and sometimes it puts a different perspective on them. That's just, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other thoughts or this is just a discussion, we just gotta try to figure out what we wanna do. We can, we can nominate one, we can, or we can portion our votes to one person, or I wouldn't recommend-
Whenever you do this, though.
It's a board of five.
I would, I would ask them to, why don't they stagger their terms, please? And that would help.
I don't know why they don't stagger, uh, but I'm sure it's a statutory issue.
Is it?
I don't know.
I know that question was asked, I'm here, it was written on here.
That, yeah, that was one of the problems I had, uh, is why are we nominating?
Why are they all on the entire board?
I, I presume that Mr. Looney's, uh, four hundred and fifty-three votes, uh, I, I wish I knew how many CBC had, but I, I don't disagree. I, I, the, the current incumbents, uh, have, have done a fine job, um, they've all indicated a desire to continue. Uh, I know that I was, I was hopeful that we could get, you know, Mr. Mengers or Mr. Palosic in. Um, I think they, uh, they represent a, a good portion of the community down in South D County. Uh, but I know, and farmers, but I know we have Miss Gaetan, and she comes from a farming background. Uh, of course, Mr. Fuller, I think, is pretty pro-farmers.
And business, brings a business.
Which is, you know-
Mr. Looney's ranching.
Mm-hmm.
And Jeff Staples is business again. Judge, y'all make a motion that we go with Keen Fuller, Amy Gaetan, Paul Looney and Jeff Staples and divide their votes accordingly.
I've got a motion, uh, do I have a second on that?
A second.
Got a motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception, we will, uh, allocate our votes, uh, equally amongst, well, not equally. We will ac, uh, allocate our vote, uh, as equally as possible amongst Keen Fuller, Amy Gaetan, Paul Looney and Jeff Staples. We'll add the one additional vote to, Amy Gaetan?
The lady, of course.
Amy.
All right, all right.
So two hundred and, I'm sorry, three hundred and forty-one, three hundred and forty-one to Miss Gaetan, three hundred and forty to the, uh, the other nominees. Thank you, gentlemen. And thank you to appraisal district board members for their continued efforts. Moving on, agenda item number nine, approve twenty twenty-two Texas Association of Counties auto liability insurance renewal, starting January one, twenty twenty-two to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. Uh, tabled from the November eighth, twenty twenty-one regular term meeting. Now, at the last meeting, there were some questions that you had Commissioners with, were those answered?
They, they've been answered, yes, sir.
Wonderful, do I have a motion?
Make a motion, approve.
You've got a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without, uh, opposition, thank you.
That's all. This American Rescue Plan may take a while and we have an attorney here that we need to still executive session, can we do back and forth, sir?
I think let's do the ARP, uh, first, uh-
Okay.
Uh. Thank you, Bill. Great, no, that's, that's fine, because after that, we're gonna be, yeah, we'll, we'll be here all day, right, Mr. Ralston?
Right, so.
Okay, not a problem then.
But thank you for the thought. Uh, agenda item number, uh, eleven is American Rescue Plan ARP status and projects. Commissioner DeWitt, uh, turn the floor over to you and Commissioner Looney to tell us what's been going on.
Well, it's all good, uh, Judge and Commissioners. Uh, we had a meeting with our consultant on the nineteenth and I spent Sunday putting my notes together. And then late yesterday afternoon, we get, I thought my notes were good, we got some excellent information from our consultant. Very concise, very, very, uh, uh, to the point. And it tells us where we are, what we've done, where we're going and what we need to do. And Judge, I'm gonna need some latitude, if you would, with this item, because there's gonna be things that will, we're gonna read all this into the record, but there's some things we'll need to take an action on.
Wait, we're gonna read all of this into the record?
Yes, that's the reason I said we might wanna.
Why?
Why? Because there's items that we need to take an action on.
Well, we can do that, but, okay, oh, you just, I'm gonna give you latitude, but we'll see what you're gonna do.
I'll paraphrase what, what the, what-
Yeah, cause we can admit this into the, we can add, add this to the record.
You already have the copy, okay.
And then reference it.
What we have are twenty-two items that we're currently looking at. The first item, and, and this is gonna please some of the Commissioners, because there was some angst about the COVID essential worker pay, it's, it's been approved. It's all approved, uh, the consultant looked it up. Uh, one thing that, that I don't understand, and Grace is not here, but over, and the column says identified risk, the word non, N O N. I, I, I don't know, I think that means it's okay, but I think they use a different word would be a lot better. See, because I'll, if, if none were, it should have none with a dash.
Well, uh, administrative, um, costs are, are covered under ARP, so I'm, I'm not sure what the other part of it, cause it's not on the one that they sent over.
Yes, ma'am, I'm saying it. No, it's the word. Because identified risk, non, this, you mean none? It's N O N with a dash and it's used numerous times.
I'm guessing, I'm just looking at it, I'm guessing that it's meant, it, and it's because it gets identified, cause I interpreted it to mean that it's not a risk as long as it doesn't exceed thirteen bucks an hour, hundred and fifty percent average wage protector.
Correct. So it's a non-identified risk.
But payment to non-essential workers.
Uh, uh, okay.
I don't know how that, so that's a good point.
Yeah, I, I just, it's just a thought. Anyway, the, uh, that's all been approved, uh, we go to item, that was number one. Number two is overtime and payout of overtime, twenty-nine, seven forty-nine, uh, that's approved by the project, it's approved by the court. To my knowledge, it has been reimbursed or will be.
The overtime's already been done, sir.
Okay, I'm just reading off the list.
Yeah.
Then number three, uh, purchase one fully equipped, uh, vehicle for EOC COVID medical trailer, uh, that's approved by the committee, the court's approved it. To my knowledge, the paperwork is pending, is that correct?
It has not been paid, is that is correct, it's pending.
Okay. Number four, the COVID mitigation coordinator payroll, now this one will take court action, so I'm gonna have to make a motion. Once the committee has recommended, we went around and around about it, talking about how long it should last. We determined, and anytime I make an error, committee members let me know, that it should last for two years and it could always be stopped or started during that two years or extended past the year. That, that's correct.
Yes, I, I think it's the direction of the court on how long we, you want it to go.
Right, and that's, that's what I'll see, because if you look over in the far right, it says court approved project, it's blank. So I'll make a motion that would be approved, the COVID mitigator salary for two years through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second, further discussion?
Uh, I just want a question, has this been signed off?
That's, that's-
Physically signed off.
That's all it, that's what you're looking at, that's what you got in your hand?
It, this, this is an approved, um, expense for, for ARP. It's, it, now what's in question, uh, for the court is how long we wanna go with it.
All right, agree.
Commissioner, everything you have, uh, when it says code of federal regulation, that is the approving authority. This, everything on here is either yes or no already from our consultant.
Okay, so we're ARP committee approved project, yes, and we committee, we, we approve it.
Go ahead. Yes. Yeah, right now we have a motion and a second.
So if it says no on the ARP committee approved project, then it's not one that our, uh, that our consultants have approved.
That's correct.
Okay, and this was a document created by our consultant?
That is correct. And sent out late yesterday afternoon.
Any further questions, Commissioner?
No.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception.
Okay, number five, micro, Provo laptops, fifteen laptops, if you look on the far right, it's approved and approved. And it was approved by the consultant, so that's in the works.
Um, the, this is pending because the, there, it needs to be bid out.
Right, that's one, it's approved though, and it says the paying bids are purpose, that's correct? Yes. It has to be bid, it's not sole source.
It is not sole source.
I'm sorry. Not eighty? Okay, that's time to bring it up.
And this is gonna have to go out for a bid?
Yes, because the sole source is not, um, acceptable.
And, and that can be given to our consultant.
Let's keep that eighty thousand dollar number out there then.
Okay, number six, a storage tank, transfer a hundred ninety thousand dollars Skidmore water supply for the purchase. Uh, they would be a sub recipient, this is something that takes the Commissioner's action. The way the committee is recommended to the court, that the money not be transferred to Skidmore, that it remain in the, uh, uh, county's account. That Skidmore has to follow all purchasing regulations, it's an emergency, they've ordered it in July. When the invoice comes in, they follow all purchasing, then the county will come forward, the court will pay for the, uh, the invoice.
Um, I would, I would, um, I would like the court to, uh, to take, uh, to take discretionary action to claim this an emergency situation. Uh, put a local government code, uh, two six two point zero two four.
Zero six four?
Two six two-
Uh, point, uh, two six two point zero two four is discretionary. And, um, I, I would like to claim that for this situation, uh, for Skidmore, because they are in, it's an emergency situation for, for that.
Yeah, there's no doubt, I think the consultant agreed a hundred percent.
But I noticed there's no reference to the CFR.
D F R.
The code of federal regulation.
It starts at thirty-one, it's at the top.
Thirty-one through thirty-five twenty.
Well, that one's for the microbial Commissioner. There is no code for the transfer.
Yeah, for six-seven.
Well, this was, this was infrastructure. I know she didn't hesitate, I would argue.
No, and it's allowable under our, under the ARC regulation. It's just being able to procure and at the end of C F, the C R F two hundred.
And so, at this time, the, you're requesting the court take action to approve this as emergency acquisition under local government code, section two-six-two-point-zero-two-four.
Yes.
But we're not actually expending the money, it'll be a reimbursement.
Well, we will actually be paying for it.
No, we will be paying for it.
When they bring us the invoice, we will pay the invoice.
If we have, yes, the invoice, yes, sir.
But today, we're not approving the invoice?
There is nothing to, to submit.
No, we're approving the procedure.
Okay.
So, that is my motion to approve a transfer of one hundred and ninety thousand over to the ledger for Skidmore water supply under emergency, local government code, two-six-two-point-zero-two-four, it's emergency. When the invoice comes in, the tank is already ordered, the invoice will be brought to the county, be brought for Commissioners' Court, county will authorize payment.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Are we also, is, does this resolve agenda, are the projects number seven and eight? Or is this just for project number one, or number five?
Only for that, only for that, and I'll go over these other.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Please continue.
Okay, number seven, generators for the Skidmore water supply, three hundred and ten thousand. An engineer needs to be involved, and that's where we are. We can't go forward with it till an engineer goes forward, finds exactly what we need, and gets with our consultant. Because if you go to the far right, that's who's involved.
And this discretionary exemption gives them the opportunity to have a professional, which is engineer, look over that project.
And let me ask this question. It's, we need to approve the project so they can go forward with the engineer, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the project pending engineering and that type of work.
Using again the discretionary.
You wanna just amend, or? Yeah, okay.
I think each one should be settled.
You, okay.
But you're still using two-six-two-zero-two-four?
Is the fee for the engineer included in the?
Yes, yes, because we increased the amount that Commissioner Hargit Reiden brought forth to half a million, to include the engineer's cost. The total total at one time was four hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
It's half a million now to include an engineer's fee.
And that's all of them together?
Yeah, all of them together.
All rolled up.
Together, yeah.
Yes. So, the motion was to allow it to go forward and engage an engineer to get him moving.
And that's second.
Under?
Under two-six-two-zero-two-four.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Please continue.
Number eight, transfer twenty-two-nine-sixty, it'll be the same process. That same engineer probably can design that, if it's necessary, if not, it's mainly repairs. We, the committee has not approved it, so we have a decision to make, court, whether we wanna go ahead and approve it, or whether you want it to go back to the committee first. The committee, I'm sure, is gonna say yes. We could save time and do it now.
Um, that, yeah, it doesn't matter, I mean, because we can direct the committee to, you know, the committee answers to us, we don't answer to them, so we can go ahead and, unless there's some concerns, or if we need some additional time, because again, we're not, we're not expending funds.
No.
We're declaring an emergency and committing funds, so I would presume that if circumstances change, we can come back and unwind that.
Is that number flexible, or are they gonna, is that?
All these are, we don't know till we get the final bid in. These are estimates. Yes, ma'am, Inspector.
I'm sorry, I have something to say. So, I'm looking at these estimated budgeted numbers, and we have one hundred and ninety thousand for the tank, three hundred and ten for generators, that's already five hundred thousand. And then we have the twenty-two-nine-sixty.
Well, that came up after we allocated that half a million. It's, the money's there.
Okay, okay.
The money's there. If it's here, it's there.
Okay, because, yeah, that just adds up to one.
Well, if you don't want more money.
No, I'll take more money, of course. I'm girl, I can spend, but I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page.
I noticed your pocketbook, consultant.
Yes.
Yeah, and the pen is ready to write.
Right here.
I would, I would make a motion, let me do this with the committee first. I'll make them, the committee's here, all but Grace. I would recommend to the committee, we approve this for court. What does the committee say? What's the?
Yes.
Okay, the committee approves it for court action, so please proceed. I would recommend to the court that, and I'll make a motion to approve this under emergency two-six-two-oh-two-four.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Please proceed.
Okay, number nine, that has been put on hold, the cash and city. Number ten, three S U Vs for the Sheriff's Department, or Sheriff's Office, that's been approved in all directions. It'll be purchased through the buy boards. I think the paperwork is pending on that.
Yes, and we do have the number for H, G C eight, H G A C, which is our cooperative.
Okay. Number eleven is restore the emergency operations center, complete the renovation existing county-owned building, located one five South Jefferson, three hundred thousand. Commissioner Fadis has done a fantastic job getting it to the point at that now, and we're okay on that. It's approved both places. We need court approval to engage an engineer and move forward. I will make a motion to do that.
So, we're making a motion to approve number eleven, the renovations.
Are we?
Well, we're not, we're not approving the renovations, we're not approving expenditure of money. We're approving retaining, or going out for bids for a design?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay.
And that's all wrapped up in the same amount.
And the expenditures associated with that, if we choose not to proceed, would they still be ARC, appropriate ARC expenditures? Say we go out to bid, we get an engineer, he comes in, he says, this is what I can do with this space. We look at it, and we're like, yeah, that's not gonna work. Can we still utilize our ARC?
I think we'll be in charge of the engineer and tell that engineer, this is what we're expecting you to provide for us to do this.
And with this situation, I mean, I believe this to be an emergency situation as well. Um, but it, this is a kind of a duel, because it, some of it could be under ARC. ARC is pretty, you know, has some specifics, but speaking with lost revenue, which I believe is a, you know, is court budgetary money, it would be covered with those monies. So, I believe either way, we'll be able to go forward with this project.
Okay.
So, that's my understanding, and I do, again, believe it's an emergency situation.
My mate, Ryan's watching, just to let you know himself.
You're right.
He texted him on, the engineer, is that including the extension that he requested?
Yes.
Yes, we're looking at that.
Everything.
We're looking at it all, yes.
We're looking at the whole complex.
Okay.
Turn down that chair, paving, everything.
Within that, within that parameter of three hundred thousand.
Right, and it could be more or less. These are just, uh.
Well, you wanna make sure that the extension, because at the current.
No, it's.
Helen, he's gonna be on the front street, on Jefferson Street.
Well, that brand new door, the Commissioner's.
That's all he's.
Through that brand new door, the Commissioner's, please have food.
We're gonna have a covered parking space for you, Ryan?
Anyway, I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion, I'll take it. Motion and second. Any further discussion?
Um, could we please put that discretionary so that we can get an engineer and?
Yes, yes, it was discretionary, to involve engineer.
And so, that motion was amended, and the second was amended. Uh, no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Please proceed.
Okay, number twelve, purchase high-resolution body scanner, that's approved, but bids are pending. Have to go ahead and get bid, so that's gonna happen. That's health and safety issue. Number thirteen, local park, what we ran into there, everything's no all the way across, and the consultant said, until we have master plans for those parks, we can't even consider it. So, that's a no on number thirteen. Number fourteen, transfers of city, it's considered and not recommended at this time. Number fifteen, replace sewer lift station and lines at B Development Authority or B D A, that infrastructure is two hundred thousand. The committee has approved it, and the court approved project maybe. It's on the original list. How does the court want to proceed on this? Commissioner Fadis, are y'all getting funding from another source, or is this gonna be your source?
This isn't the source, and that figure, that two hundred thousand dollar figure was produced by an engineer. And then, once the funds are awarded, they'll fall under that engineer's plan to not exceed, or they have to fall. An engineer designed the packet that y'all have now, and it's like a hundred and, I don't know how many pages it is, it was our catalog.
Did y'all see that?
Did you see it?
No, no.
I've seen that.
Grace has got all that.
Yeah, it's half inch thick, I mean, with all the plans and designs.
Yeah, that's what she didn't wanna print, the whole thing out, that's why we were there.
Yeah, no, they went through a lot of detail to show what that installation would be exactly.
Let me make a motion that we, for the court to proceed on this, with an engineer being involved.
Properly procured.
And it's properly procured.
Correct. I have a motion, a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Please proceed.
Number sixteen, mobile radio upgrade for the Sheriff's Office, seventy-two thousand, eight forty-three forty-nine. This has come up a couple of times. I'm surprised that, I thought the committee had approved it, but the committee's here, committee.
This hasn't. This was a later submission.
Okay, that's what I'm going, you approve? You approve?
Yes.
Okay, we've got, the committee has approved it, we'll recommend to the, the committee recommends to the Commissioners' Court that it be approved. I think that the invoice is pending. Does this include radios for J Ds? What is this?
Does not.
No, this is sure.
Yes, this is not for emergency management.
Sheriff's office.
It's Sheriff's Office.
And now, it's programming and all the bells and whistles and everything else.
Yeah, but all the constables have it, so I'm not sure why our J Ds wouldn't.
My motion is to approve this project.
Well, I have a problem with, I'm sorry, I have a motion, I have a second.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? I have a problem with this, because if we're gonna purchase additional radios, couldn't it be cost-effective for us to get that straight on the front end, and purchase them all at once? Or should we purchase twenty-five for them, and then if we purchase other radios for other individuals, we'll do that at a later date?
It'd all be the same.
Is it all the same regardless?
Well, you've got, I think it should be all the same. You've got E O C radios down here, are they the same?
I don't know.
Well, he just left.
We don't know, because this was added late in the game.
He just left.
No, I wouldn't make a decision on this right now.
No, and that's what I'm saying, I don't, that's my thing, is figure out how many, if we're gonna buy radios, how many radios we're gonna get.
Yeah, how many radios are all done at once?
Right.
Yeah, that's all.
It's not a do or die a day, I mean, we can come back and make it work.
Because I was thinking, I don't, but I don't know, I mean, let's turn around time on radios.
So, five, six, three?
No, 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 still order them.
Oh.
Are they in stock?
Could be five this year.
Yeah, it depends. I'm working on it, and they're, ours are in stock right now, I don't know about any additional. The radios that E O C wants, are they the same? Is it Sheriff's Office?
Um, I'm gonna say no, sir. The reason being is that the eight hundred frequency that they're gonna be using will allow us to communicate through the entire, excuse me, through the entire region. Tampat County.
Oh, yours are stronger than?
A different frequency altogether, for example.
Different type of radio?
Okay.
But they can talk to each other, yes or no?
Yes, it includes the eight hundred megahertz in the radio, but it allows him to talk to others. It allows us to go through other frequencies.
Okay, so, all right, well, let's proceed. Here you go. We have a motion and a second. I'm not, I don't object to going ahead and approving it, I just, it'd be good if we do everything at the same time, but that's just my knee-jerk reaction, so I don't have a problem. Well, there's been a request from our J Ds to obtain radios, and.
So, it's four.
Well, but there's some issues that need to be discussed with respect to that, so we have a motion on the floor in a second. Although I did raise some concerns, I'm not, I don't object to the motion, and now I'll call a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion, oh, well, that's a tie. Y'all are good, aren't you? Look at you. All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote in favor, so, and I appreciate it. I know I'm the only one, I raised these concerns, but it's, it's okay.
Well, that was, I mean, and also the time, I mean, it's not like, if we don't do it right now, we're gonna.
But why not? But I don't know, that's with the supply chain.
It sounds to me like we don't have all the information.
We don't, we don't.
But we do.
That's kind of, well, we, no, we really don't.
But it says right here that we still don't.
Yes, we do.
Oh, we voted, and it's been approved.
It's been approved.
We voted, and it's been approved. Yeah, please continue.
Uh, number seventeen, replace parking, spawn hospitals in all county parking lots, parking lot used to stage the COVID. Uh, the committee, now, I thought we approved this.
We didn't do an actual vote there.
Okay, well, let's do our vote now, then, if you would.
I don't, I don't.
I don't like doing that either.
Okay. This was your item, sir.
I know.
Yeah, but I'm still not seeing, I'm not seeing where, not seeing where.
I know, but I don't know what, where we're at on it, so I don't know why we're approving the expenditure of funds, that's the only reason.
We were just setting up though.
Oh, you're trying to allocate for purposes of, excuse me.
That's correct. Yeah, because there's, we haven't gotten exactly what needs to be done yet.
But this is just an approximate also, Commissioner. I mean, it was brought in at the last, you know, the last part of our meeting.
Yeah.
So, I just don't see the rush in it.
I don't have a problem either way.
I don't see the rush.
It's not going anywhere. We can pass on number seventeen, Judge.
Yeah, why don't we just hold, I mean, I definitely, you know, personally, I think it's valuable. I think all of these are important for us to continue to consider, but I don't know what I'm, if I'm approving the ARC committee to continue, or if we're specific, I guess we're not really, you're just looking for guidance more than anything else.
That's correct, because if you tell us we're not going anywhere, we'll bring it up.
Yeah, so I entertain a motion to approve continuing to look at the remainder of these items, any of them, including number seventeen specifically. If that'll provide y'all, I want the committee, because I really appreciate everything you guys have done, and y'all have been carrying the ball, and I don't wanna come in at the eleventh hour and totally change what you're doing. So, I do wanna, I do wanna support and give y'all support where I find it necessary. And so, on seventeen, I do want y'all to continue to look at that. I think that's important expenditure.
We'll leave it at a not-yes, Judge. And number twenty, Expo Center, upgrades the restaurants at Expo Center, this is Commissioner, uh.
Next month, probably have to get an engineer to look at all that.
Okay.
Whether it's gonna be more prospective to building this down, to just renovate the restaurant, or tear everything down, start over from ground zero.
And at this point in time, are you ready to engage? Is that what, are we looking to, like with some of the other agenda items we talked about, giving authority to engage an engineer to limit that, or to go out for bid for that?
I would suggest going out for bid for that situation, because it's not an emergency, in my opinion, and it would be.
Okay, to do that, then, we're gonna need to have a committee vote and take it to the court, so y'all can authorize to go out for bid, is that? Amy? On the renovating the restaurant at Expo?
Yeah, we discussed that.
Do you have a monitor?
Clarify, and define it, kind of, that's pretty broad.
The committee recommends whatever he wants to do now.
No.
We got that shit.
You know what I mean? I kinda hardens it in, if you're gonna do one or the other, have choice A and B, or within this parameter.
Either renovate or not.
I probably wanna have an engineer look at it to see, I mean, if the shell of the building is good and sound, there's no.
Right, but I want to have an engineer look at it to see, I mean, if the, if the shell of the building is, is good and sound, there's no sense in rebuilding the whole thing. Just do it all the inside.
Kinda like you did over here with the electric.
Or is it according to engineers? If not, then we just need to tear the whole thing down, start over from ground zero.
We got one of our next agenda.
And the thing of it is, with an engineer involved, then they can give you their time. Yes. If, if, if those are still operable and they're still working and everything else, an engineer comes in and says, hey, we can build one for this much. Leave those that are operating right there and it'll add in case of emergency or in case of additional factors. You know what I mean?
Right.
You're tearing one down. You might not need to tear it down, but then again, it might make more sense to build a new one, decide to do it at a different location.
Yeah, the cost, the cost to tear down is added to the cost of building. You need to build one and keep the old one.
So, if all of these are working properly and everything else, they're, they're, yeah, they're old. You know, sure, they could be upgraded or paying whatever, but they could still function in case of emergency. Say we had a disaster or this is a, this is the fourth county for a hurricane. You have three hundred ambulances or you have three hundred, uh, uh, C P N L trucks coming down that, that need a place to stay or whatever. That would be a location to put them on.
So, so once again, I think if the, if the request is looking for support from Commissioner's Court, uh, to move forward on, on this, uh, project, uh, I, I think you have it, uh, with respect to, uh, providing direction, specific direction or allocation of resources. I think at this time, really, you, and I don't, we, our next Commissioner's Court meeting is on the thirteenth, so I'm not sure if you have adequate time, but you might identify and just reach out directly to an engineer and just get the, get the ball moving forward. And I, I know Mrs. can do. Yes, sir.
It's, it's possible, if you could get the emergency management department involved with that, um, if that is a shelter, one thing that we will need to try to do if, if it's in the scheme of things, showers.
Right.
So, if, maybe you have the engineer throw that in as well.
Okay, yeah, no, no, I appreciate that. Yeah, that's, uh, um, so, but I, I don't know that we really need to, because we don't, uh, I think that's something that you can probably just continue to bird dog on, on your own without any, you know, express authority. I mean, you, you have authority to, to, to bring something more specific back to the committee and, and to the board, but to the extent that we need a vote to show that the Commissioner's Court continues to support this project, I mean, I'd be happy to entertain that motion as well at this time.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we, uh, to get the support of the court to move forward with this project.
I've got a motion, a second. Motion and second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Please continue.
Okay, number twenty-one, uh, those little solar powered message boards, three of them, uh, the court, the committee has approved them, the court has not. They are message boards that be used, if you will, you know, like they use down at the, uh, COVID, COVID message board. And, uh, to be honest, anybody can use those later, election, sheriff's department, wherever. So, uh, the recommendation, the committee says they be approved by the court, so I'll make that recommendation if they be approved by the court.
Do we actually have, like, this is something that we can go out, if, like, we can go out for bid on, like, we could approve to go ahead and, you know, commit expenditures to acquire these?
I'm, I'm not sure that, um, that hasn't been brought.
I think so, uh, E O C may know more about this than we do.
We, the research that we've done, uh, was not off by board, uh, because of the rig that we were looking for that comes self-sufficient with cones and barrels.
Right.
Uh, with that, to where you could cone things off. So, because it's more specific, it was not on by board, but that doesn't mean I can't go back and double check.
Right, so we'll have to get some, so we do have to bid it out.
We do have the stack and every, all that was given.
Okay, then we, then we can go forward with the bid, if we don't find anything on the co-op.
They're gonna be in charge of it. You're just adding on, you're something to maintenance or else.
Make a motion to approve and, and go out for bids on these.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Three.
I'll be on second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception.
Number twenty-two, E O C radios, Motorola handheld, all band radios for emergency response. Uh, their bid came in at thirty-six thousand eight fifty-three twenty-six. That number needs to go in at blank. And, uh, the committee has not approved. It's come before the committee and since the committee's here, I mean, how do you feel about this E O C radio?
Well, we don't even have anything in front of us on this. There's not even, I mean, I, I'm, I don't wanna approve until I have more information, but there's more members to it.
Okay, is this, these Motorola radios, are they by board?
Motorola is Motorola. I doubt very seriously Motorola's on by board.
So, in other words, go ahead.
It's an issue that we need to get for the auditor and grandma to support our radios and not be the one that'll be here. My findings.
Only just put a whole.
There's certain procurement required to get.
We don't have to say, no, I would just say we still support it.
We'll, we'll support it, but we just gonna, just put a, put a break, put a break on it.
Okay.
Now, again, these are all band radios, so they're gonna be different than.
No, yeah, yeah.
I was just saying.
Yeah, 'cause I, you, you had given me a, a sheet and it was for, uh, you remember how many there were?
Six. Uh, Ryan, I have, say Ryan did that.
There were six and one. I think there were six altogether.
Okay.
Come back to it there. Okay. Uh, that, that, that ends my, uh, my speech.
Okay.
And let, and let's, there's some questions.
And Ryan confirmed six.
I don't know. I, I've gotta say thank you guys for the committee. I know this is moving in fast. I know you guys are juggling a lot, but I really appreciate y'all staying on top of this for us. Um, and I think these are all really good, uh, developments and, and really good projects.
The, the thing that, that I have to appreciate is, uh, our, our new, uh, project manager is, uh, Angela Leach. She put these, this packet together. I think it's very comprehensive. It's all right in front of us, uh, and I'm sure that the auditor will get back with her and let her know which ones were approved to move forward on that were pending. Is that correct, man?
Uh, Grace, Grace is the direct contact with her.
She's doing excellent job.
Yeah, she, she really is. Working very hard. There's a lot, there's a lot behind the scenes that goes into this. They're talking almost every day.
Excellent. We'll keep going, y'all. And, uh, again, thank y'all. And, uh, for those agenda items where there's further action to be taken, uh, hopefully, uh, by the thirteenth, we'll have some good updates, maybe on eight and a half by eleven type of page. Just kidding. I really like that. It's a lot of effort. It truly is.
I spent all morning making these things to do.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
I even had to change the center of my printer at home because I use so much print.
Oh, man. Thank you, Commissioner. Is there anything further on there? Yeah, you, okay, good. Techno, technologically.
Absolutely. Yeah, I don't know why. I went through a whole row.
All right, moving on. Agenda item number twelve, update discussion and possible action regarding B Calbe, B County COVID-nineteen status preparedness and contingency planning. Mr. Willow, can you tell us something about the Omnicron variant, what's going on and, and what the state of Texas is seeing?
Yes, sir. Um, I know everyone was watching the news the past few days and we have the new variant, the Omnicron. There's little known about the variant so far, but what is known is that because of its makeup, it's thirty or more protein spikes. And just to let you know, protein spikes in the, in the COVID cell is what attaches itself to the cells in the human body. Now, the difference between the Omnicron and the Delta virus, the Delta virus had four protein spikes. So, the ability to contract the Omni when it comes to Texas, if it's not already here, is substantial. Uh, you have more than four or five times greater percent of contract. Now, the good thing is, is that so far, no one's been hospitalized. The report from the, uh, four continents that have the virus, no one's been hospitalized yet. Um, so, at this time, I would like to encourage people to start wearing their masks again. And I know for me, at my house, it was one of those, hey, I'm vaccinated, you're vaccinated. It's okay, come on in without mask. I'm gonna change that simply because I don't know what this variant is gonna do. Um, also, if you're not vaccinated, I have to say, please get the shot. And if you're ready for your booster, by all means, get it. Also, when in doubt, get tested. Uh, we have testing sites at the Expo and the Friday before, Friday after Thanksgiving, we had zero people going to be tested. So, uh, testing will be conducted. We, we've modified the hours to let people know because the, uh, requirement or the need for testing has diminished quite a bit. Testing will be conducted Mondays from two o'clock in the afternoon to six o'clock in the afternoon. And then on Friday, from ten o'clock in the morning till three o'clock in the afternoon at the Expo Center. So, if people wanna get vaccinated, uh, for the kiddos, the Department of State Health Services at seventeen seventeen West Corpus Christi Street will give vaccinations Thursday from eight-thirty in the morning till twelve noon. And then you could always go to Wal-Mart, Walgreens and T L C. Uh, we ask that you call and make an appointment for that. Uh, by all means, if you have any questions, give us a call. Um, we're down to, right now, it's a ghost crew. I have Ryan out of pocket. Uh, this, uh, again, is in training in Victoria and I'm kinda here as a ghost. I should be released next day or two to come back to work. So, um, if you have any questions, I'm glad to entertain them.
Just get healthy.
Trying. I'm getting my foot ready. Getting my foot ready.
Keep it elevated.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Willow and, and the members of the public. Please, please take up there. Um, is there, are there any other, uh, discussion, comments? Okay, moving on. We are, we do have an executive session, uh, today. Um, we are about to go into it. Therefore, public notice is given that B County Commissioner's Court may elect to go into executive session anytime during the meeting to discuss matters listed on the agenda pursuant to the authority granted under the Texas Government Code, chapter five-five-one. Immediately before any executive session, specific section or sections of the Texas Government Code, chapter five-five-one, that provide statutory authority will be announced. Upon completion of the executive session, the Commissioner's Court may, in an open session, take such, take such action as appropriate on items discussed in an executive session. I'm calling agenda item number thirteen. Executive session pursues Texas Government Code, section five-five-one point zero-seven-one, consultation with legal counsel, colon, B County Law Enforcement Center. Um, at this point in time, I'm going to ask everybody to leave. Thank you all for your presence here, uh, this morning. You can go ahead and turn off the, the screen. We're not gonna come back live at the conclusion of, of the screen, but it's a public meeting. Our doors are open. If you're interested, uh, when we do come out in public session, you're welcome to come here in person uh, and see what, if anything, happens. Thank you all very much. We're also gonna take a brief five-minute recess to allow everybody to use the restroom, freshen up. We'll be right back at it.